Welcome, everybody, to the May Town Meeting. I'm sorry, the May Town Meeting, the October Town Meeting. Someday, I'll get my month straight. I'm the moderator, Sean Keely, and it's my job to run the town meeting tonight. Just very briefly, to my left is the Finance Committee, and to my right is the Board of Select, the Select Board. And behind me are a variety of town officers, some of whom we'll be hearing from tonight at various times. As always, if we could please rise and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There's still a few people checking in, but we'll get some of the preliminary things done and start with the articles in just a moment. As is typical, we like to remember the people from our town who we've lost since the last time we gathered. And so today, we're remembering Edward V. Casey and Patrick R. Colleen. So if we could please have a moment of silence for them. Thank you very much. We have one announcement. There are flyers circulating around, but save the date. October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we have truck-or-treat. Costumes are encouraged, and it will go to support the holiday fireworks. So hope to see everybody there. The rules of tonight's town meeting are governed by the Official Handbook of Parliamentary Law for the Massachusetts Moderators Association Town Meeting Time. Please follow along if you have your copy. Another preliminary matter that we have, that we always go through, is to determine the quant, or allow the moderator to determine the quantum of vote. That is, sometimes a vote is required by nine tenths or two-thirds. This motion would allow me to make that determination without going to a hand count. It's a time saver, but if anybody doubts my decision that we've satisfied the quantum of the vote, you could just ask for a hand count, and we will, I will gladly have the tellers count people by hand. What's that? Another frequently asked question at the beginning of town meeting is how much money do we have? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, I make a motion that the moderator be allowed to determine the quantum of the vote. Do I have a second? Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. So, how much money we have? So here are the following figures. In school stabilization, we have $214,713.44. If everything proposed in the warrant tonight passes, we will spend $164,416, and it will leave us with $50,297.44. In certified free cash, we start the night with $2,717,390. The plan at this moment is to spend $279,658.17, leaving us with a balance of $2,437,731.83. In the overlay surplus, that is, the fund controlled by the assessors, we start the night with $76,000, and the plan is to spend $76,000. And the amount we have in stabilization is $1,491,814.70. So wonderful. I think that's all the preliminary matters. Oh, yes, thank you. And the clerk informs me that as of 6:25, we had a quorum of well over 100 people. So, thank you very much. We are now at 2:15. Article 1. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,285.47 to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. Seconded. These funds are needed to pay prior fiscal year bills received after the close of the fiscal year. This requires a nine-tenths majority vote. Any questions or comments about Article 1? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine tenths. All right. Article 2, just by way of explanation, Article 2 has been split up into several motions. There's no difference from the way the warrant was first printed. The only thing is, is that it helps split up the debate. So I'm going to make a variety of motions here, all under Article 2. Article 2A. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $33,550 to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article 5 of the May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, for various town departments. Do I have a second? Thank you. Explanation. The purpose of this article is to restore the highway, $20,671, and administrative unions, which amounts to $12,879 hours, in the current fiscal year's budget. Any questions or comments? Mr. McKinnon. And as I'm sure Mr. McKinnon will do, when you come to the microphone, please be sure to state your name and address for the clerk.
Hello, I'm Mr. McKinnon, from 64 Stevens Street. I have a question on, kind of a general question. I know, I didn't go through the warrant in complete detail, but I noticed that several of the positions that were unfunded are now being funded. However, Finance Committee is not recommending them. What changed from May?
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Good evening. That's a great question. So I'm gonna sort of approach that in a little bit of a roundabout way and touch on where we are financially, and then I hope that will answer your question. So what I'd like everyone to take a look at, as we've talked about, was our free cash number, right? I think a lot of people saw that free cash number and assumed that we had the money to make adjustments based on what we did in May. In May, we made a calculated decision to reduce hours to set us up for fiscal success in the next, in the next year. Free cash is higher than had been expected due to several different things that are one-time occurrences. We had $1.1 million in budget turnbacks and closed out articles. That means our town accountant went back and found money that was left over from previous town meetings that was unencumbered. He turned it back in. We had $871,000 in local receipts, which is well above the estimates that had originally been given in May. Again, one time above, well above the estimates. And finally, we had about $140,000 in state aid that was above the estimates. These are one-time finance boosts, giving us that $2.7 million. I know people saw that $2.7 million and said, why are we sitting on it? But here's the second part of the answer. Right now, the town accountant is already anticipating a deficit of over $2 million right now, the way we're sitting. That's level funding, that's no pay raises, that's no cost of living increases, and we're already showing, running a $2 million deficit. So to spend that free cash now would be unwise, as we will need all of that free cash to support next year's budget, unless we pass an override, which we've had difficulty in the past getting by in for overrides. So the easiest way, the safeguard, is to disapprove all of these reinstatement of hours. As much as it pains me, as much as we've worked to get here, if we reinstate these people, we may have to cut full positions in the spring. This was a, this is a temporary measure to ensure that people remain employed. And while I understand to look at that $2.8 million makes us seem like we are cash-heavy, we are not. A $2 million deficit without raises, without increases. And some of those raises and increases are contractual. We don't, they're already negotiated for next year, right? Some of them are automatic. They kick in. So at a $2 million deficit, the Finance Committee decided in good conscience, we could not recommend reinstating all, any positions. So you're gonna see for Articles 2, 20, and 21, all of them are not recommended by the Finance Committee. Adding to that, on top of it, right, so we're already talking $2 million deficit, we're looking at a vote in January, February timeframe, and I don't know the exact date, where we will have to vote on approving funding for the new South Shore Vo-Tec, to the tune of about $1 million, give or take. I know the estimates are still coming in. Superintendent Hickey will probably correct me, but it's right around $1 million. So in February, we're gonna have to come up with another $1 million. Now, we can bond that, but that's all dependent on the town. So if the town decides to get, that they don't want to take out a bond for it, our only option is to pay it out of free cash. So you're talking about $3 million in, of deficit that we're sitting on right at this minute. So while my heart goes out to everyone whose hours were cut, and I wish we were in a different scenario, $3 million deficit, we're still, we still don't have the free cash to cover it. So I would urge all of you to think about where we are going to be in May, right? A one-time fix where we plug a hole, get some hours back in there, seems like a good idea, but it's not sustainable. We will be right back here for an override. We will be right here cutting services even deeper, where we have to go deeper into cuts. So again, there are a lot of things at play. $3 million is the number we're looking at for May. Thank you. Sorry. Steve, did that answer your question? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Frank Malisi, 604 Brook Street. What number did the, did the town accountant come up with for the school assessment next year based on that $2 million deficit?
Mr. Sullivan.
I'm not gonna dive down into the individual budget, because I can't speak to what the School Committee is going to do. So we're, we're roughing it out at $2 million. So it could be north of that. We're going with some historical numbers. Last year, again, this is a rough estimate, because the departments aren't required to submit a budget until December, right? So the individual departments will submit their budgets. We won't get the school budget probably till about January or February, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, I can't say with certainty what level. We're talking a ballpark figure, about $2 million. Could be 2.5.
And just, and just a point to echo Mr. Sullivan's point, any money that we spend right now in free cash, we're going to have to pay back in May. We're gonna have, we're gonna be dealing with it in May. There's no getting around that. And it's especially important if the school budget comes in higher than what they're predicting, which could be 5%, it could be 10%.
So, in his, sorry. In his estimates, the town accountant used 7%.
What was, what was last year's increase?
Mr. Malisi.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Moderator. Wait. I'm pretty sure it was like 7.64, something along those lines?
It was somewhere around there, which is why we use the same thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris, Transfer Station Supervisor. I have a question about the $1.1 million.
Oh, pardon me? Chris, I, as a town official, I, I'm going to recognize Chris. Chris, could you just say your last name, though, for the record?
Chris Callahan, Transfer Station Supervisor. About the $1.1 million, is that for 2025 or 2026? Because I was under the impression it would be assessed in 2026.
Mr. Sullivan.
Assessed for South Shore Vo-Tec?
Yes.
I think Superintendent Hickey could answer that better than I can.
Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Tom Hickey, 410 Brookbend Road, day job, Superintendent, South Shore Tech. The, a slight tweak. If we are successful in getting this project approved on, through a district-wide ballot on January 25th, we would expect to do short-term borrowing. So the million-dollar range is probably something that would roll on for fiscal '29 or fiscal '30. We're in front of the MSBA at the end of this month, and we intend to put out more specific numbers, hopefully, in the first week of November. But I would expect that there would be short-term borrowing. We may have to borrow money in fiscal '26, probably pay interest only on about $14 million. That's about $450 grand. One of the items that I'm gonna be looking at with our School Committee is that with the 55% reimbursement rate for feasibility, we'll be sitting on some stabilization money once the feasibility process wraps up. And it would, it's my intention right now, I'll let others smarter than me clarify this, but I think we'll be able to take that stabilization money and use it to cover the costs of any interest, hopefully for fiscal '26 and '27. But ultimately, Mr. Sullivan's point is that we're approaching a number closer to the million-dollar range. It's when we fully bond the project.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, or statements on, on Motion 2A? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2A signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Chairs in doubt, could the teller, we'll call it one more time. This time, if you wish to vote yes, please hold your card up high until the tellers have had a chance. All those in favor of Article 2A, please signify by raising your card now.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
They're sitting in the visitors' section?
Oh, yes. Oh, if, if you have a blue card, you'll be counted, of course, but it would make things easier if you moved out of the visitors' section. And if any, likewise, if there are any visitors seated out here, if you could please move to the visitors' section.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Fifty. All those opposed, please raise your blue card now. Mr. Moderator, plus eight on the last count. Mr. Hayes.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-two-zero.
Twenty?
Thirty-one.
So by a vote of 137 to 79, the Article 2A is approved. Article 2B. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $34,500 to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article 5 of the May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, for various town departments. Seconded. Explanation. The purpose of this article is to create a line item in the current fiscal year's budget that will cover expenses incurred due to annual vacation buybacks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2B signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Once again, the chairs in doubt will take a count. All those in favor of Article 2B signify by raising your card at this time.
Thank you.
Thirty-six, Mr. Moderator.
Say it again, please.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Eight.
Eight.
Twenty.
Two-zero.
Zero.
Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card at this time.
Thank you.
Forty-five, Mr. Moderator. Forty-five.
Three-six, thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Five-zero.
Fifty.
So by a vote of 64 to 131, Article 2B is not approved. Article 2C. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $5,000 to supplement appropriations for the Select Board's budget. Seconded. The purpose of this article is to supplement a line item in the current fiscal year's budget, fiscal year '25, in order to fund an additional expense incurred during this fiscal year. Any questions or comments on that? Are you coming to the microphone, man? Okay. All those in favor of Article 2C signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Article 2C is not adopted. Article 2D. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $1,500 to supplement appropriations for the Select Board's budget. Oh, didn't I just do that? No. This is a different one. Okay. Seconded. Seconded. Explanation. The purpose of this article is to supplement a line item in the current fiscal year's budget, fiscal year '25, in order to fund an additional expense incurred during this fiscal year. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2D signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The nays have it. Article 2D is not adopted. Article 3. There is, there is a slight change from the warrant here, and I just want to be, get this correct. In the warrant, under line seven, Hanson Middle School Boiler Replacement, the figure you'll see is $13,790. The actual figure is $35,808, which would bring the total allocation for Article 3 to $261,434, all coming from school stabilization. So let me read the article, the motion, and then we'll, we'll go for a comments and questions. Article 3. I move the town vote to transfer... One moment, I'm gonna get this wrong. What's the total coming out of your favor, Bacon? Sorry. You know what? How about if we pass over this article for a moment, and we'll return to it once we have our ducks in line? Oh, you do? Okay, we will do Article 3. I move the town vote to transfer $75,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund and $186,434, I'm sorry, $186,434 from school stabilization account to be expended for capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments, as printed in the warrant. They can't hear you. Could you go to the microphone, please?
Joe Campbell, 150 Woodbine Ave. Did we receive the water stabilization fund amount, the full amount, at the beginning of town meeting?
I thought I had, but perhaps I did not.
Thank you.
Yes. The, as of six, as of tonight, in the water surplus estimate, the water surplus fund I believe somebody asked what school stabilization was?
That water.
Did they? Currently, in school stabilization, we have $214,713.44. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4. I move the town vote to amend the Wage and Personnel Bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, by deleting Sections 11a and 11b in their entirety and inserting the new Sections 11a and 11b, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Explanation. The changes to the compensation plan are in bold italicized text. The changes include removing the Information Technology Director to be a contract employee and creation of an information technology specialist. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 54b, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with the Massachusetts Prudent Investor Act of Chapter 203c of the General Law. Seconded. The explanation is, this section enables mass municipal treasurers to apply the prudent investor rule to optimize returns on trust fund monies, as defined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 203c. The use of this new law requires local approval at town meeting before implementation. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6. I move the town vote to transfer $76,000 from overlay surplus to pay for the fiscal years 2026 through 2028 interim and certification year adjustments and the commercial, industrial, personal property cyclical revaluation of the town's real estate and personal property values, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, and Chapter values as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, and Chapter 5218 of the Acts of 2016." Seconded, the explanation is, "Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, requires evaluations be certified every five years. These funds will cover a three-year contract for interim 2026, certification year 2027, and interim year 2028 adjustments. All building schedules, land tables, depreciation schedules, et cetera, are recalculated according to current real estate markets. New income and expense figures are also adopted based on the current commercial industrial market. The estimated amount is $76,000, and this requires a two-thirds majority vote." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 6 please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Article 7, "I move the town vote to transfer $12,900 from free cash to make repairs to the Town Hall. Seconded, areas of Town Hall are leaking and are in need of repair." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 7 is adopted. Article 8, "I move the town vote to transfer $91,000 from free cash to purchase and install a generator to be shared with the library and the council on aging. Seconded, this article will allow us to purchase a generator for use at the library senior center, slash senior center when there is no power. This will ensure that we will always have a heating and cooling center for those in need when weather-related events cause power outages. In addition, it will ensure that the essential services performed by the library and service center, senior center are able to continue to be performed even when there are power outages." Any questions or comments? Oh, Ms. Kement.
I just want to mention, I just want to mention that we have exhausted all possibilities for grants. We also looked at whether this was eligible for ARPA money, and at the end of the day, neither one of those actions panned out. And so although we know that this is free cash, we feel that it's extremely critical. We had a number of times last year when we had seniors that were without heat or in extreme, you know, in extreme weather in the summer, they were without cooling. And as you know, if you sneeze in Hanson, we lose electricity. So, so this will just assure that we're able to keep those services going and have a heating and warming location.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
What fuel does the generator run on? Natural gas or diesel?
All right. The question was, what's the fuel the generator would run on? Ms. Kement, do you know?
Ms. Green, do we know? Yeah, we have to turn on our...
Natural gas.
Yes. Yes, it's natural gas.
Natural gas is the answer. Thank you, Chair. Although, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 9 is adopted. Article 8 is adopted. Article 9, "I move the town vote to transfer $26,750 from free cash to replace the station battery backup, perens UPS." Seconded, "The station battery back, backup supplies the core electrical systems to the police station for up to two hours when there is a power failure. The system supports the town's computer, internet, radio, and phone systems. The current backup has a projected end life of December 30th, 2024." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 9 is adopted. Article 10, "I move the town vote to transfer $9,360 from free cash to replace HVAC units at Hanson Fire." Seconded, "These funds are requested to replace three HVAC units at Hanson Fire Headquarters. These units are wall units and are over 10 years old and unable to be repaired." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 10 is adopted. Article 11, "I move the town vote to transfer $40,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for the purposes of updating the Open Space and Recreation Plan." Second, explanation, "The 2017 Hanson Open Space and Recreation Plan was a seven-year planning document based on the requirements of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. The plan expired in April 2024 and has left the town ineligible for potential grant funding available through the Division of Conservation Services." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, "I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by amending Section 2 definitions, Section 6 use regulations, and Section 7 development of sites and location of buildings and structures to add Tier 1 B E S S as an allowed accessory use and Tier 2 B E S S as an allowed use with site plan review, create a definition for battery energy storage system, and reference and criteria for site plan as printed in the informational warrant." Second, explanation, "The Town of Hanson approved a battery energy storage system bylaw at the annual town meeting in May 2023. The Massachusetts Attorney General's Office disproved the bylaw in its entirety during its review. The proposed attached amended language was prepared by Town Council to address and correct the deficiencies listed by the Attorney General. This requires a two-thirds majority vote." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 12 carries by the required two-thirds majority vote. Article 13. "I move the town vote to appropriate $955 from the Community Preservation Housing Reserve for a 10% grant match being provided by Mass Housing to review a town-owned property on Phillips Street." Second? Second, thank you. Explanation, "Mass Housing is providing a technical assistance grant in the amount of $9,550 to review a town-owned property on Phillips Street, currently under the control of the Hanson Housing Authority. The grant will provide funding to the town to review existing site conditions, specifically the size and location of an existing resource area, wetlands, and its impact on the possible development of the site for housing for Hanson residents. The town is required to provide a 10% match of the grant amount." Yes, sir?
Thomas Peters, 111 High Street, Hanson. I've been a resident here for 14 years, and on this article, I had a few questions I was wondering if I could ask you. I grew up in this town, so I know just about everybody here. I've been part of the building and the creation of the town for a long time. I don't know if any of you guys know Roland P. Leary built a lot of houses here. A lot of you people live in those homes, and we put the neighborhoods in and we built the houses like King's Landing Way, we built that, right up, right by the Town Hall. Lakeside Terrace, we built that, Hammond's Estate. We even built a little mill, told, donated to the town, and we were part of the Town Hall addition that we put on there. So for years, we've been in the town doing all kinds of work, and in the last few years, I started doing a lot of 40B projects. I've been involved in many of them. I work for a company called C. Sporito, and we go into towns like Kingham, and we put all kinds of projects in there. One of them, we just finished is the Bill Cove Development. You people might know about it. So I have a lot of experience with these type of buildings and the way they work. I have some questions for you that I'm hoping you can answer me about this property. And to start out with, one of my questions is, what exactly is this land that we're, we're looking at it? Is, is it the Housing Authority land that, that's right off of Phillips Street?
Ms. Kement?
Is it the land that's owned by the Housing Authority?
Tony DeFrances, here, I don't know. It's the town planner?
Lot, known as Lot 101?
Is someone from the Housing Authority or Town Planning here?
Michael Jones, 429 Elm Street in Hanson on the Housing Authority, and this land was donated to us a long time ago, and after deeds and deeds and looking at this and that, we kept being told we had a piece and no one could find it. And so maybe a year or two, with some of the things going on, we did find the property, we did walk the property, and it is, was donated to, in the rights of Hanson Housing Authority.
So it was never donated?
If you could come to the microphone, please.
It was never donated to the conservation and then given to us. So you guys, it was donated to you?
Yeah.
The question I have about that is, will this study that's being conducted, will it be under the eyes of the conservation and the zoning board, or will it be under a outsourced, like, grady engineering, someone like that? Who's gonna do this study? This impact study?
I, I can't answer that, but they did, I, I forget exactly who, but they, we did hire a company. I would be wrong to say the wrong name, but there's a company, I believe it's a Hanson company that is gonna do just, to see if the land is wetlands, what it is. That's the only part of this at this point.
I'd, I would like to remind the town that, can you tell, with these land, with these 40B projects, what happens with these is, we, we try to develop land that would ordinarily be unusable, deemed unbuildable. So years ago, when they were going down Phillips Street, you see houses. You see a house, a house, a house, a house, and then all of a sudden, you see a huge vacant spot, and then you go up about a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile, and all of a sudden, you'll see houses starting again. Well, the builder at the time that was building these houses, he didn't all of a sudden say, hey, I don't want to build in this spot anymore, I think I'll go up a little further. This land was deemed unbuildable, wouldn't pass a per test. You don't have to do a study to find that out, it, it's just land that can't be built on. But what happened is, the state, who put us in a lot of trouble telling them that we could produce housing for people that we can't produce housing for, we just, we just don't have enough homes for them, has asked the town to try to find it in their wisdom to overlook some of these rules. So one of my questions is, does this land that you are proposing to do this study on, does it fall within state funding?
Ms. Kement?
Well, this isn't my article, I'm just basing this on, you know, conversations I've had with the town planner and community preservation. My understanding is, this, this is a grant to look at that piece of property that Mr. Jones just mentioned.
Right.
To see, can anything be done with it? This is not a 40B, it's not an anything, it's literally just a...
Just in the proposal stages, I get that.
What, what could we do with it?
I get that.
And we've already got a state grant for the majority of it, but they require some skin in the game from the town.
Right.
And so, the, you know, the Housing Authority came and said to community preservation, could you give us the 10%? That's my understanding, and again, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Campbell or Mr. Jones knows more, I don't know.
So we had a similar property on West Washington, sorry, we had a similar property on West Washington Street, did a similar scenario. We deemed that we can't build anything on it, it's unusable, and we donated it to conservation. So I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen with this, but we're just looking at it to say, hey, there's a town asset that we could have, is it worth anything? Can we do anything with it? And that's, at this stage, is all we're doing. And, and it's, there's nothing to do with the state, nothing to do with federal, there's nothing to do with MBTA grant, like, we've had this property well and before. I'd rather Hanson Housing have it than the state, I think, at this point.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Campbell?
Sure. Joe Campbell, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, so very much to the last speaker's comments, there has been no discussion about 40B. It has not been on the table with the Planning Board. Again, this is just as it's printed. It's funds to study the land to find out what could be done for the Housing Authority.
Thank you. And if we could get the comment from the gentleman behind you, please?
Well, he's, I think, he's, hold on, he's gonna follow me.
Okay.
So. I can help, I think I can help everybody out with this and answer the question for everybody that we're trying to avoid. Across the street, the depot that was built by the town, that was supported by the Housing Committee, was that, did that receive any state funding? Did it receive any state funding? That should be a pretty easy question. Did you receive any state funding from that?
So again, Joe Campbell from the Planning Board, I don't see the relevance with the Dakota Partners property and this property, that's...
There's a huge relevance here.
I disagree.
There's a motive. Motive is, we're gonna receive funds from, from the state. There's a huge...
You've got to speak into the microphone, but I'm not...
There's a, there's a huge motive here, and it's a slippery slope you're about to go down, a very slippery slope that you won't be able to come back from. Right now, as we speak, there are lawsuits being brought forward to other towns that are doing this. We're not just the only town, there's towns all over that are trying to take land that's deemed unbuildable, that we've let our wildlife live on for years, and they're destroying it. And I know, because I'm the guy who does it.
Well, I'm the guy goes in there and destroys this land and kills the wildlife that's in there. That's what happens. And before we get too far down this road, I think we're, we're venturing into kind of speculative territory.
Not really. There's a motive. If you're receiving funding, there's a motive.
Sir, I get to make that decision. Oh, one moment, I'm just gonna finish this. You know, if, if I determine that it's becoming speculative and not germane, then we move on.
Sure. I understand that.
Ms. Rain?
Somewhere, somewhere out in the internet, on Facebook, there's been a rumor running around that we are going to bring ourselves in compliance with the MBTA, and I think that that's, this is part of what he is talking about. We have heard zero about this land being used for anything MBTA-related, number one. Number two, just so you all know, I'm extremely opposed to the MBTA thing. This is not something that we've even discussed. So I don't know where this 40B talk is coming from. I understand it's across the street from the depot, I, I get that, but honest to God, nobody has said a word to us about building a 40B, using that land for anything. All they want to do is see if it's worth anything. If it's worth something, maybe we can make some money on it. If it's not worth something, let's give it to conservation and get it off the tax rolls. That's, I think, all that's going on here. You believe what you want.
Well, it's not that I believe what I want, I would just remind the people in this town that when they take a piece of land that's unbuildable, I'm a builder. If I went in there and wanted to build something, this town would shut me down in a heartbeat. You can't build in there, this is unbuildable. It's wetland. They'd say absolutely not. And we, I want to do a test hall, I want to see if it's buildable. Are you doing that? Is this part of your, part of the study? Is it gonna include doing test halls and seeing where the water table and if it's buildable? Is that part of your study?
The Housing Authority would have to answer that.
We, the information in the warrant, and, and what I would suggest is, I mean, we're spending $955 to conduct a study with the state. That's...
Well, let me try to close and maybe help you out with this. We come to my point. We built subdivisions years ago, 20, 30 years ago, we built them in all your towns, you all have them. And when we built them, we put detention ponds in, tons of detention ponds. These were the, these were the solution to the water problems we create when we develop wetlands. We have to do something about the water. So we build detention ponds. These detention ponds today are loaded with mosquitoes. They are mosquito breathing, breeding grounds, and don't believe me, Google it. They are mosquito breeding ground, breeding grounds that are destroying our, our precious
And again, I, I believe we're totally off track at this point.
The other thing that's not gonna be included in this study is, you have water lines that are over 80 years old, that are dissolving in the town.
We have a point of order. State the point of order. I agree. Unless you have something to say directly to the article, then we have to move on.
You're investigating land to be developed. You're investigating land, it, it has to do with the article, no matter how, what you, how you slice it, that's what you're looking for.
You know, and I...
Can it be developed?
And it's gonna be a long night already, and I don't want to argue with anybody.
I'm sure.
But I mean, there's, there's nothing about development in here, it's, it's whether the Housing Authority knows what they have.
In closing, all I'd like to say, I respect this board, I really do. I give you credit for the job you do. We know it's not for the money, we know it's for the love of your citizens, and I give you a ton of credit. And I'm not here to be against housing. I stand to lose more than to gain by standing up here and telling you what's going on. I'm a builder. But I'm telling you, we need to address these problems. But I'm telling you, we need to address these problems. We can't just keep spraying for mosquitoes, spraying chemicals in areas, that isn't solving our problem. We, I would plead with this board to make a motion to do zero building in this town as far as detention ponds go, until we come with a solution, which would be an underground recovery system, something that's not...
And we do have to move on, sir. Do you have anything? Do we have any other comments, sir?
Yes.
Okay, please make it relevant to this comment.
I certainly do. It seems we've been here five months ago, on May 5th, when we voted for no building on the wetlands by 277 to 153, almost a two to one margin. If this is the same property, then Article 13 has been rewarded, reworded, leaving out the MBTA, but most likely leaving in multifamily units, 784 units that were on there, that we voted against to be built on the wetlands, which is usurping the vote of the people. You don't like to hear this, do you? You don't like the truth? Well, I'm going to give it to you.
Sir, we're not going to have anybody make comments like that.
All right. Well, it appears...
One moment. It's a breach of decorum to attack somebody's motivations or their willingness to listen or accept the truth. The Chair has ruled that the only thing that's germane right now is whether we're spending $955 for a study for the Housing Department. I think we have covered everything related to that, and I, any speculation as to what's going to happen with the, with this property is a matter for another town meeting, I may not even moderate. Ms. Rain? Oh, we have a motion for a vote. All those in favor of...
If I may?
No, sir.
Who are these Hanson residents you're talking about?
Why Hanson residents?
Do you need to house yourselves on wetlands?
Again, not germane. All those in favor of moving to the vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The Chair's in doubt. All those in favor, please signify by raising...
I just would like to clarify.
You have to come to a microphone, I can't hear you, sir.
Sorry, I was trying to get your attention.
Dan McDonough, Carriage Road, Hanson. Article 13 at the top, it says appropriate for 955, and the explanation, it says 9,550. I'd just like to know if it was one or the other.
I do believe the 9,550 is what the Mass Housing would put in. Our portion is 10%. So, all those in favor of Article 13, please signify by raising your blue card at this Mr. Hayes?
50, Mr. Moderator?
50.
3-2, 32.
32.
45.
45. All those opposed Article 13 signify by raising your card now. 34. 34.
16, 1-6.
1-6.
46.
By a vote of 127 to 96, Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. I move the town vote to place the parcels listed below in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for conservation and open space purposes, protected under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution, and to direct the Select Board to execute a recordable instrument to that effect and cause it to be recorded at the Plymouth County Register of Deeds as printed in the warrant. Seconded, the listed parcels have been considered to be in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for many years, as evidenced by the assessor's records. However, the deeds do not specify that the use of these parcels is conservation and open space, and no town meeting votes have been taken to place these parcels in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. This, however, requires a two-thirds majority vote. Any questions or comments? Oh, yes, sir. Please come to the microphone.
I'm Dave Mansfield from Hanson Conservation Commission, 145 Stonebridge Drive. And the Conservation Commission has proposed this article, and it's our intent and our duty to protect conservation property. These properties are deeded according to the Assessor's Office as conservation land, but it's not formally deeded that way at Plymouth County. So we're just asking to kind of correct this somewhat contradictory situation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Kement?
Yes, at one of our last Select Board meetings, we had a member from the FinCom who had questioned what the dollar amount would be, and we were fortunate to have our town council at that meeting, and they're estimating that it would be under, I believe, $4,000 to do this. So I just wanted to make sure that people knew that. It sounds Herculean when you look at this list, and again, this is over a long period of time, and this is cleaning up the books.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Article 15. I move the town vote to transfer $23,000 from the notice of intent account to replenish the Conservation Fund. Seconded... Yes?
Yes.
One moment.
Yep. Article 14? Yep. The Conservation...
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. I will remove Article 15. I move the town vote to transfer $23,000 from free cash to replenish the Conservation Fund. Seconded, the explanation, the Conservation Fund supports the Commission's efforts to carry out its care and custody responsibilities for open space and recreation areas. These efforts include trail building and property maintenance, such as parking area building and maintenance, provision of signage, notices, and other information, property enhancements such as mowing, invasive vegetation removal, and site cleanup, wildlife habitat and stream improvements, removal of encroachments, establishment of bounds, and survey recordings, and obtaining equipment necessary to support these activities. Any questions or comments on Article 15? Ms. Kement?
I just want to say that we're super, super lucky to have such a dedicated group of Conservation Commissioners and other volunteers that take care of the trails, but they need money to do some of the work that they're doing. And if anybody's been up to Plymouth County Hospital, or the Town Forest, or Smitty's Bog, which is right next to Camp Kiwanee, you will notice a discernible difference over the last three to four years, because these trails are being actively maintained, there's parking barriers being put in, they're a shared delight to enjoy. So I encourage you to enjoy them, but I also encourage you to support the efforts of these volunteers.
Yes, sir.
I'm Dave Mansfield, Hanson Conservation, Stonebridge Drive. My work on a Conservation Commission besides being a Commissioner is to actually maintain these trails. I'm the coordinator for it, and I'd like to thank volunteers that are here that have helped. It's a lot of hard work, and I love it, but we need supplies, we need lumber, occasionally we need a subcontractor, so that's what this is about.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 15 is adopted. Article 16. I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept an easement from Danica Development LLC, its successors and assigns, to allow for the construction and maintenance of underground and above-ground utilities, and for continued access to carry out said purposes to a portion of the property known as 1139 Main Street, Hanson, as shown on an access and utility easement sketch prepared by Crowell Engineering, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, and further to authorize the Select Board and other applicable Town of Hanson boards and personnel to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this article. Seconded, the current owner of 1139 Main Street is granting an easement to the Town of Hanson for the property situated at 1155 Main Street for right-to-connect, excavate, use, alter, repair, maintain, upgrade, inspect, and replace an underground natural gas pipe, overhead electrical service, radio, and communications antennas. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 16 is adopted. Article 17. I move the town vote to transfer $72,800 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, and $62,200 from the under-designated Community Preservation Fund, for a total of $135,000, to purchase an approximately 45-acre parcel, a portion of MAP 24, Lot 70-1, from Hubble Distribution Incorporated, including expenses and further vote to authorize the Select Board to accept and acquire the same and to enter into any and all agreements necessary to effectuate the same, including the grant of restrictions thereon, said property to be in the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. Seconded, explanation, it is, it is proposed that the parcel now owned by Hubble, 84, I'm sorry, 87.14 acres will be divided approximately in half, with the eastern half about 42 acres being purchased by the Commonwealth Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife as an addition to the Burridge Wildlife Management Area. The western half, about 45 acres, would be purchased by the Town of Hanson as conservation open space in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, and combined with the Crooker Place Conservation Area to close a gap in the Bay Circuit Trail. The portion to be purchased by the town is primarily wetland and an estimated habitat of an endangered species. Did I, Madam Clerk, did... Oh, so this is not a two-thirds? All righty. I made a mistake, but we'll rectify that in just a moment. Yes. All right. So, on Article 17, it is not a two-thirds majority vote, it is a pure majority vote. So, all those in favor of Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Clemmons, then we'll go to Ms. Marini. Mr. Clemmons?
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street, formerly a member of Conservation, but I speak from the memory of us talking about this. This is the last gap of privately-owned land for the town's portion of the Bay Circuit Trail. We have about seven miles of the trail in town, and there's about half a mile that's privately-owned, and it's a risk of being lost. If we don't gain control of this and put it in a secure position going forward, which this would do, we might have to relocate a couple miles of the trail out onto Route 27 and other undesirable places. We have wanted this land for 25 years, but Hubble and its predecessors, this complex business situation there, it was never available until just now, and this does not affect, it's not raised in appropriate money, it simply is proposed and used CPC money, which exists and is intended for this kind of purpose, and we'd like to see it used for that purpose. This is the section two, or very close to the section that was featured on Chronicle a couple of years ago on the Bay Circuit Trail in Hanson. So it's, it would be a great project, we think of it as the Bay Circuit Trail Gap Closure Project to expend this money.
Thank you. Ms. Marini?
Thank you, Kathleen Marini. First, I'd like to ask the Finance Committee why they did not vote for this, did not recommend?
Mr. Sullivan?
The opinion of the Finance Committee was, we haven't had great luck with land we've picked up from Hubble, so we hadn't gotten a full explanation of why we exactly needed this land at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I spent some time looking at, number one, the Bay Circuit Trail, and noticed that there is a gap, but the gap is, appears to be over a piece of land that we already own on MAP 33, Lot 9, which is owned by the town, and is at the Crooker Place end. I also consider the taxes that we get from Hubble right now, that piece of property is valued at, the whole piece of property is valued at $348,000, which does generate taxes for the town. I realize that the state wants to purchase the dry side, so to speak, the eastern side, which is dry. The western side is very wet. Seems to me that we're spending CPC money, which could go to other things in the future, because I would think if the state purchases the eastern part, then Hubble would be left with a landlocked piece of land, which perhaps they would donate to the town. It's all wetlands, what are they going to do with it? I just would recommend that, I don't think it's a good time for us to spend, even though it's CPC money, to spend this money on a piece of wetland, when I think there could be better uses for the CPC money. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Maria Robins on Mon Beatrice Lane. I had two questions, and forgive my ignorance, but is there, are there structures on this parcel of land?
Mr. Clemmons is indicating no. Mr. Clemmons?
No, this piece of land has never been developed. In the 400 years since the pilgrims landed, there's never been any development on it of any kind. It has always been the edge of the swamp, and it's been useful for things like cutting cedar logs, et cetera, et cetera. It used to be useful for accessing the dikes and things around the swamp when United K. Cranberry controlled all the water there. But we're in a different era now. The Cranberries no longer rule the world, and there's never been any development there. Hubble has owned this for several decades, but they never did a single thing on it. It's separated by a large piece of actual swamp from the Cox Avenue end, where all the development was. It was simply purchased by them to expand their footprint so that they could, perhaps, as they developed, things have a smaller percentage of their property, be under development there, so it would be more approvable, et cetera. But this has never had any buildings on it, and to correct a previous speaker's comment, it is privately-owned, it is the gap. I've been involved with the Bay Circuit Trail since 1999, when it was first proposed through the town. It has been, we had to get a one-day special permission from the previous owner, Light Control, to have a special expedition cross that area, and they gave us in writing that permission. Since then, that's not been renewed except verbally. So we would like to have this become a secure thing. The Bay Circuit Trail is basically the, it's the backbone of the town's open space and trail system. It has helped us in the past get any number of state grants, who knows what that's going in the future, but we're also in line to get some private grants for things along the trail in this particular area. So there's actually no reason to not do this, and many reasons to do it, and you're interested in the town meeting to do so. the town meeting to do so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. That definitely ameliorates some of the worry for my second question, which was, is there any potential environmental remediation responsibility having to do with the transfer of land?
Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Clemens?
If the town authorities choose to do so, we already have a verbal quote from a firm to do that. It would be a couple of thousand dollars, but the money would be available from private sources. But again, there's never been any development there. I think the risk of that is extremely low. It has pretty much zero resemblance to the other end of the Hubble property on Hawks Avenue. This is the Crooker Place end, but there's never been anything except animals and the Indian Crossway.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. Once again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is adopted. Now, I made a mistake. Article 16, which we just did, I did not note that there was a two-thirds majority vote required to pass it. So what I'm going to do is redo the motion. I'll skip the explanation for you. But I move the town to vote to authorize the select board to accept an easement from Danica Development LLC, its successors and assigns, to allow for the construction and maintenance of underground and above-ground utilities and for continued access to carry out said purposes to a portion of the property known as 1139 Main Street, Hanson, as shown on an access and utility easement sketch prepared by Crowell Engineering, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, and further to authorize the select board and other applicable Town of Hanson boards and personnel to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this article. Seconded. Once again, this requires a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Article 18. I move the town to transfer $250,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to fund and/or reimburse for those items also identified in the informational warrant. Seconded. The explanation is Plymouth County requires town meeting approval as part of the application process. The town is applying for ARPA funds for the following projects. Project one will include updates to the Hanson Food Pantry Facility. Project two includes stormwater infrastructure repair, catch basin repairs or rebuilding. And project three is for the purchase of a Class V non-transport ambulance, which transports lifesaving equipment. Any questions or concerns on Article 18? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. I move the town to amend the South Shore Technical High School Regional Agreement as printed in the informational warrant. The explanation. The amendment will change how each town's share of debt will be calculated to allow for changes in student enrollment over time. The current formula fixes a town's debt share for the life of the borrowing, and the share is based on a town's enrollment in the school during the three fiscal years preceding the authorization of the debt. This amendment will instead look back to a four-year rolling average of student enrollment to calculate a town's annual debt share. Any questions or comments on Article 19? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. I move the town vote to transfer from Notice of Intent Fund $16,887 to restore the Conservation Agent to full-time status of 35 hours per week. Seconded. The Conservation Agent was a full-time position until July 1st, 2024. The current requirements and workload of the Conservation Commission and Conservation Department cannot be achieved with the agent in a part-time status. Any questions or concerns? Yes, sir?
Dave Mansfield, Conservation Commission. I'd just like to explain why we need to renew his hours to full-time, if I could briefly. We are mandated and through us, the Conservation Agent, responsible for administering the Mass Wetlands Protection Act and the Hanson Bylaw, Wetland Bylaw. So the agent's duties include advisory responsibilities to the CONCOM and other boards and commissions, as well as administration, supervision and enforcement duties in support of CONCOM work related to state and town statutes. This includes review of proposed projects, Notice of Intent, recommendations for and writing of orders of a condition, mitigation strategies and orders, as well as administering enforcement orders, site visits and inspections. In addition, he manages the town's conservation properties. With the increasing development of commercial, single-family, multifamily and recreational properties and the redevelopment of existing commercial and residential properties in town, demands on the agent's time have increased significantly. We've all seen the developments going on. Projections from state, county and master plan sources are for increased development to satisfy growing demand, so there's no reason to think that his load will decrease. Most of the easily-developable land in Hanson is already in use, which means most of the new development increasingly impacts land that falls under Wetland Protection laws and regulations related to drainage, water quality, wetlands and habitat protection mitigation issues. So Article 20 will increase the agent's back to full-time so he can address all these obligations. Please note that the cost for this will be funded by an existing commission NOI Notice of Intent Fund and will not be from our free cash. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hayes? Yes, sir. The question by Mr. Hayes is, why did the Finance Committee vote against this? Mr. Sullivan?
We, so the Finance Committee originally voted this, the reduction, based in May, based on the town administrator's recommendation for both these positions. The change in funding source wasn't made aware to us until just now, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $18,925.70 to restore the Health Agent to full-time status of 35 hours per week. Seconded. The Health Agent was a full-time position until July 1st, 2024. The current requirements and workload of the Board of Health Department cannot be achieved with the agent in a part-time status. Yes, sir?
Dave Mansfield?
You're getting a lot of busy, business tonight.
145 Stonebridge Drive, Hanson. As far as the Health Agent is concerned, his hours are such, I'd just like to kind of clarify a few things, what he has to do. He works in accordance with Mass General Laws 105 CMR 590 Food Code Regulations, that's retail and restaurant inspection and enforcement, 310 CMR 15.0 Title V Codes, that's septic system installation and repair, 105 CMR 410 Standards for Human Habitat Inspection, that's housing. And he's also required by DEP regulations to oversee waste sites and named waste sites in town. He also is charged with enforcing Hanson Bylaw 3-1 Regulations of the Board of Health. The Health Agent is the inspection and enforcement officer under the above statutes and laws. In addition, the agent is the contact person for response to questions, complaints and emergencies related to the Mass DEP, Mass Department of Public Health, Kiolas Commuter Rail and Town Municipal Departments. Additionally, he is in charge with monitoring water quality of the town's ponds, water quality and testing of the ponds. He's also required to respond to citizen and business questions and complaints, including related to Board of Health regulations. He's also supervisor for the operation of the transfer station. I'd just like to clarify that his job demands are increasing exponentially, just as they are with Conservation. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Michael Jones, 42 Elm Street. I just, and thanks, Dave. I didn't, some of these things, I didn't know that's what our Board of Health inspector does. Just curious, maybe clarification. Is he a title, he's a Title V inspector? He does all the Title V inspections in Hanson? He's a licensed?
Is anybody from the Board of Health here that could answer that? Mr. Amato is coming to the microphone.
Title V inspections are done by an independent contractor for homeowners and business and stuff. That's what a Title V inspection is.
So this wouldn't cover, you wouldn't be under?
No.
So when Dave said that this falls under you, you don't do this?
No, that's 3/10 of my Title V.
We don't pay the Town of Pembroke anymore to do our, like, Board of Health inspections or?
Never did.
At restaurants?
Mr. Amato.
You do all the restaurant inspections?
We, myself plus an independent inspector.
An independent inspector?
Yeah.
And why is that?
We can do this through the?
Oh, perfect, sorry. I didn't know if there was anyone from the Board of Health on the board here.
No.
Currently, there is not tonight.
Okay. So just some of the things that I think we, I thought that he does, I guess, maybe doesn't completely fall under this $18,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. I believe the ayes have it. Would anybody like to challenge that ruling? Seeing none. All those, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. Just to check, is Mr. Patel here tonight? If you could come to the microphone. Would you like to make the motion or shall I?
Yes, I can make the motion.
Okay, very good. Mr. Patel?
I move to see if the town will vote to repeal the adopted ban on the sale of miniature single-use containers for alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw that was approved at the annual town meeting on May 6, 2024, under Article 29.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Patel, do you want to give an explanation?
Yes. The ban, first of all, will impact the freedom of choice for the Hanson consumers. It's also going to hurt our local retailers who rely on the sale of these minis to keep their businesses going. Do I need to read this explanation or I could add?
You can say whatever you would like, sir, by way of explaining your article.
So first of all, in Massachusetts, the question of a mini bottle ban has been put to open public vote 13 times. It has failed 10 out of those 13 times, and there's a reason for it. First of all, the Hanson community is not Chelsea or Brookline or Boston. We don't have those downtown areas. Originally, when this ban was passed, it was comparing to those communities, right? Litter is a problem. We did, Hanson retailers, we did a cleanup over the weekend. We found Dunkin' Donut containers, there are Nesquik bottles, there's all sorts of plastics. We are not banning that. And also, just banning the NIPS is not going to change anything because consumers are going to go to the next size up, which is going to increase more drink driving as well. There's also the people who are working in other towns, traveling and working in Hanson, they could still buy these single-use mini containers. So that doesn't help. The ban doesn't help. Also, we are talking about adults. We have laws for drunk driving and everything else. Just banning something is not a solution. Litter is definitely a problem that has to be addressed, but banning is not the solution for that. Also, for retail businesses, 30% of the liquor sales are related to these minis, which will put a significant burden on keeping the business open. Also, the losses in revenue is going to go to neighboring towns like Whitman, Pembroke. None of them have mini bins. In short, it's not going to have the desired effect to decrease the litter rather than strategizing something else and keeping the NIPS sale going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and distinguished members of the Select Council and Finance Committee. My name is Scott Simchenko, 135 Spring Street. I work at Liquor Liquors on Liberty Street, which is also known as 1458 to a lot of the constituents here in town. Here to speak in favor of overturning this ban on NIPS. The only thing that a ban accomplishes is that it will hurt the small businesses here in this town. A lot of consumers come to 1458 to purchase their NIPS or their alcohol. Banning NIPS will discourage them from coming to our store, but also to local stores around the surrounding commerce area. About 30% of transactions at our liquor stores include NIPS, and prior bans have proven that consumers would take all their businesses to other communities. If our stores in Hanson lose 30% of their sales, that's lost revenue for the town. And from what I understand from our Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Sullivan, we're already looking at a $3 million deficit in this town, so that revenue is much needed. It will also force the store to lay off employees, part-time employees, cutting hours or even closing. This job is how I support my life, my wife, my family and afford to live in this town. This ban has real impacts on families like mine who are trying to get by. We all agree, there's no need to be, there's not really a solution to the litter at this point, and the ban is not a plan. But the vast majority of constituents and consumers, 99% roughly, buy their mini bottles and dispose of them appropriately. We need real solutions that folks some all kinds of litter, not scapegoating local small businesses. The decision on what size product to purchase should be made by consumers, not by our town government, and I urge my fellow residents to vote yes and protect local small businesses, consumer choice and the jobs of our friends and neighbors. Please show me an overturning this ban. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Steve Smith, 4 Monroe Street, and also I'm the one who proposed the NIP ban back in May. I want to start off first by pointing out one incorrect statement made by the previous speaker. The Town of Hanson does not get any money regarding the sales of anything for that. That is not legal in Massachusetts since 2010. There is no tax to the town or any town from the sales. We only get property tax from the building itself. That is across the entire state, not just Hanson. Also, in regards to each of the points on the handout here, so on the first one where it says, you know, basically that it'll move over to the neighboring towns and that it'll impact the other sales, 30% of business to the, sorry, 30% of their business is not going to be lost, first off. Studies have already been done in several of the towns that have implemented a ban, and they've seen no significant drop in sales. There are actual studies that have been done where they've actually gone back and looked at the revenue for each of the towns that had that, and there's been no loss of revenue or single-digit percentages. The other thing too is that I want to point out that the 30% number was 30% of their transactions involve a NIP, not 30% of all of their tire sales are NIPS. Also, I question that number anyway. If they're saying that 30% of all of their sales come from NIPS, that's pretty strange considering that you would expect one-third of the damn store to have that, to just be NIPS then. In terms of the proposals here, and when they said that they did a cleanup, yeah, they had, I saw the sign on Hanson Market, they had a cleanup on the 5th. You'll notice that they did that two days before coming up here, just so that they'd be able to say with goodwill that they're trying to clean up the town. We did a cleanup ourselves. Green Hanson did a cleanup, and in 90 minutes with less than 20 volunteers, we found 2,100 and something odd bottles. We filled up two kiddie swimming pools and took a picture of it. That's, and like, half those volunteers were kids. One of them was my little kid. He picked up a whole bunch himself. So that's a lot of them for such a small area. And also, we didn't clean up the entire town. Like I said, it was only 90 minutes. I only did like one street myself, and I found over 200 of them. Literally Reed Street. I only did Reed Street and I found 200 NIPS. Me and my, me, my wife and my five-year-old son. So it's not a small issue. It's a fairly large issue. In terms of also, I just want to point out another thing too, where they say here that the, should they be recyclable? That's getting beyond the point. They're not recyclable, and they're not going to become recyclable regardless of whatever we do here in Hanson, because frankly, they don't fit into the sorting machines, not to mention the fact that most of the people that are throwing these things out aren't interested in recycling. They're throwing them out. A study that was done, sorry, I shouldn't say a study, a record-keeping that was done by Halifax, when they have a similar group to ours, where they collected 19,000 of them, found that something like two-thirds of them were found within a quarter of a mile of a liquor store along the street. They're not being brought home and thrown in the trash. They're not being thrown out by people who are pedestrians. They're being thrown out of windows of people who are drunk driving. So that's just false. The other problem that I would also point out here is that they're saying, oh, they're going to have this huge loss of revenue that's going to lead to people being laid off. No, they're really not. The studies have already shown that that's not the case. There have been no liquor store closures as a result of these bans in other towns. And then also, yeah. Uh, and then also, yeah, they'll push them to the other towns. Some of the other towns surrounding us are looking to nip ban themselves. Halifax has a big initiative going for it with, with their cleanup crew, and I've heard rumors of Pembroke trying to do the same. If we reverse ours, we shoot that down. And if we, it, people are not going to go all the way like three towns over just to get a small bottle, they're just going to buy a pint. And we want them to buy a pint. That was the point that Mr. Patel made. We want them to go upper size because the upper size is not likely to get thrown out, and if it is, it's one bottle to pick up instead of two or three. It's less trash, so that's perfectly fine by me. Also, is it going to, is it going to increase the drunk driving because they have the pint? No, it's the other way around. The studies that have shown, I'm, I'm sorry to use Chelsea because he points this out, but Chelsea is the one where the city police there gave us actual statistics on that. Drunk driving in the city of Chelsea the year after they passed that ban was down over 40%. Same thing with the fatalities for the crash. So it does actually affect it because people buy the large bottle and then they go home and drink. They don't drink on the way out the door from the liquor store. Also, I would also point out another thing too, that the Luke's Liquors one, 1458, they have a, they have a refrigerator on the counter that says cold NIPS on the go, and you can buy them refrigerated. Why do I need them refrigerated if I'm not drunk driving?
Well, we'll, we'll leave that speculation.
Drunk driving is the, is central to the point, Mr. Moderator, but I'll drop the point.
And, and that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the main-
Have you concluded?
Oh, no, I wanted to say one other thing too, that the, uh, the, the major argument here too is that, that the proposal would be for the litter problem because it is a significant litter problem. It's not, when they're saying, oh, Dunkin' Donuts cups and this and that and the other thing, well, those things don't make up greater than two-thirds of all trash that gets picked up every time we do a trash pickup. By volume, it is vastly nip bottles by a lot. Then, uh, pointing out one, and I promise this is my last one here, but the last thing that I would point out is that they're not recyclable, they aren't redeemable, they're never going to be redeemable, the recycling companies don't want them. But then the last part here is that the, the suggestion is that the government do something about it, that we put up new, uh, you know, receptacles and so forth. We don't have money to have to, to do that. We also, we're broke. We're not going to be putting up anything anywhere, and we're not going to have Highway Department going around picking up the trash for that. The, the simplest solution is to get rid of the, of the problem by just taking it away. It's not a personal choice issue. I'm not a teetotaler. I drink. I will not throw bottles on the ground, but I can't say that about every other person who does it because from what I've seen, there's quite a lot. I'm also, I, I also clean up the, the cemetery over at the, I'm the cemetery commissioner, by the way. Uh, I clean up the cemetery. I picked up over 400 of them from the Thomas Tomb, an area that's literally smaller than like this area right here. 400 of them I picked up, I took a picture and posted on Facebook. I went back there, two months later, I picked up another hundred of them. That is right down the street from a liquor store. So I would just want to point out, it's not like it's a small issue and it's not like it's that. And we're not saying you can't drink, literally buy a pint if you want to, those are way less likely to get thrown out. And in terms of the cleanup, I would also like to point out, and this is my last one, but I'm also on the, a member of the Conservation Commission, and one of the liquor stores in town came before us, and we had to actually put a requirement onto his petition to improve the structure, uh, because that he cleaned up his property because the neighbors came in and asked for that as a, as interested as butters. We had to compel him to clean up his own property, he's not going to clean up the town.
Well, I, and again, I don't think that's germane to this issue.
It is because-
Nope. Ms.?
Diane Thomas, 448 Monpox Street. I also want to speak in favor of keeping the ban in place. Living on Route 58 since the ban, there have been a lot fewer NIPS on my front lawn and along the bog on South Street. I think it, it's worked out well.
All right, thank you. Um, yes, sir. Uh, the, fell, fell in the grace shirt, please?
Uh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say, I live on West Washington Street.
Could you introduce yourself?
Mark Riley, West Washington Street, and for the past 11 years, I have vast experience in cleaning up the litter on one of the, the main streets. Um, a lot of alcohol bottles. I can attest that, that NIPS, uh, half gallons, um, whole cases, um, I'm probably going to do it this weekend directly across the street from me, right after, um, right after, um, the bend where they're doing all the work, uh, literally, uh, pound of hamburger, it's old, it's absolutely ridiculous, thrown in the bushes. The, the NIPS make up the minority of what I clean up, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, but I don't think, you know, hey, people can graduate to pints, it's kind of personally ridiculous, but from what I've seen, alcohol bottles of every single type, um, are thrown across the street from my house, and I've been cleaning it probably three times a year for 11 years straight. I go out and pick it up, and, uh, so I don't, I don't know if banning NIPS is really good. It's like, it's kind of, for me, it's kind of like, um, saying, hey, we're going to dictate the business you do here and not that you do what you want and not be business-friendly, but I just want to throw my two cents in, I think we have a litter problem for sure. And, um, you'll see during the winter, you drive up when the leaves go away sometime in December, January, you can see this past year was absolutely awful on West Washington Street, all the way up to the intersection of the funeral home. So I don't know. Half gallons, I pick up a, quite a variety. People place whole cases in the bushes, so it's a problem, not necessarily relegated to NIPS.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Adam Valkovic, 372 Home Street. Um, I stood here not six months ago in defense of the so-called nip ban, and yet here we are. I ask one thing from everyone in this room, please take a moment, use some common sense, right? So you know, please ignore Facebook, right? No one, everyone ignore Facebook tonight, no common sense there. First, first off, can everyone admit to themselves in the room what NIPS are? These are tiny bottles of booze that are only meant for two things, drinking fast and drinking undercover. That's it. So these tiny bottles of rocket fuel allow people to consume alcohol while hiking, fishing, going to the ballgame, or most importantly, driving a car while having the ability at a moment's notice to toss the evidence on our pathways in the woods or out their car window to hide their drinking. Just a positive item all around, don't you guys think? Since the repeal of these things, nothing has changed in town. I would ask those sponsoring this article what they have done to change their situation, but I already know the answer, nothing. Oh, wait, except for the cleanup hour, a few organized very conveniently just two days ago. Let's debunk some of the reasons behind the narrative. I'll be quick. Freedom of choice, no one is limiting your freedom here. You can quite literally purchase any alcoholic beverage you would like in a container that can be recycled. That's it. Small nip containers are just trash after consumption that end up all over town. And what about the residents of town who don't drink this garbage as freedom of choice goes both ways? Our choice would be to hike on clean pathways, play on clean ballfields, and drive on safe roads where these things don't exist. This repeal would be negating all of those things for the residents of Hanson. The bottle bill is underway, someone did mention that. This same bottle bill has been argued in state Congress since 2017, that's seven-plus years ago. Everyone in this room knows how slow government moves. Heck, we're in this room talking about repealing a nip ban that the town couldn't even start to implement in six months. It hasn't even, it hasn't been approved by now, we all know it could, we could be waiting another decade or two. Enough is enough. Finally, it hurts small businesses. Stop that nonsense. Solid businesses have thrived for centuries by selling goods that customers want at a convenient location and price based on need. If you really need a fix of strawberry kiwi vodka, and if that guy drinks NIPS and lives on my street, I'd love to meet him tonight because they're all over the place, you can always buy a larger bottle and maybe, just maybe, not toss the empty on the side of the road. It doesn't hurt small businesses whatsoever, this is simply a way to add profits to the bottom line by selling to the lowest common denominator. If anything, you can buy a bottle that will earn the business more profits. To sum this up for everyone, the sale of NIPS gives our community one, litter. Two, lots of litter on trails, ballparks, sidewalks, lawns, roads, et cetera. I myself have tossed out hundreds of these things at Robinson and Botary Fields while working on behalf of Hanson Little League and Parks and Fields. The total number per year is just short of 700,000 of these bottles sold in a 10-square-mile town. It's ridiculous. Three, the ability of drivers to attempt to hide drinking while driving in a town with almost no sidewalks. Let me reiterate that, no sidewalks. How many of us walk or jog the streets in town? How about letting kids walk or ride bikes in our roads? And why we should be selling tiny bottles, and we should be selling tiny bottles of booze to people who seriously could hurt our kids? This is beyond stupid. Finally, don't be hypocritical. We as a community love conservation. Half of Hanson, half of Hanson is conservation land. We just approved Articles 11, 14, 15, 17, and 20, all having to do with keeping our small community in line with conservation and nature. Now some people are proposing we break from that and vote that three businesses should be able to sell small containers of booze that can't be recycled and will inevitably end up on those same parcels of land we're trying to preserve? Come on, people, have some common sense. We get zero tax benefits from the sale of these items, zero help with the constant litter problem they cause, and there is no issue when it comes to freedom of choice, when it comes to purchasing alcohol. Use your common sense and vote this article down to support our kids and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Day, 75 Beckett. Uh, just a quick, um, uh, request of the moderator if he finds it appropriate, just because there's been a lot of discussion from the time the article was proposed and we're voting on it, maybe just perhaps restate the article before we're voting on it since it's, um, it's a vote to repeal a ban.
That's reasonable, I'll, I'll do that, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm, uh, Steve Luke. My family owns Luke's Liquors, uh, um, uh, right there in town, and, uh, we sell a lot of NIPS. We sell a lot of NIPS to people that regulate their intake with-
Yes, um, I, I should have clarified that. Mr. Luke asked for permission to speak, uh, at the meeting as somebody who has a business in town. Um, after consulting the, uh, the Parliamentary Handbook and the town bylaws, I came to the conclusion that, that for this limited, uh, uh, point, uh, he should be allowed to address the town meeting, um, and so I would allow it. Mr. Luke.
So people do come in and they buy a quantity of, of these bottles, they don't drink them on the way home, they go home, they, there's going to be parties this month in October, uh, Halloween party, uh, what is it called, uh, uh, street parties, they'll be having these NIPS out for guests, for neighborhood parties. They work really well. When you put out 175s, big bottles, people drink more. But there's people that regulate their intake with these bottles. I had a customer tonight, he said, oh my God, I'm going to have to buy a bigger bottle, I'll still drink the whole thing in one sitting. That's not good. We're making these people drive further for NIPS. They're going to drive back further if they're driving they shouldn't be, there's rules against it. There's rules against litter. Litter, it sounds like, is the problem. We should mandate, litter bugs should be fined with community service. I guess most of it's been said. Thank you, everyone, thanks.
Yeah, I, I just want to say a couple of things on this. I don't have any speech written out, um, anything rehearsed. I don't drink hot alcohol, so this doesn't really affect me in any form or fashion, but like the man says, use common sense. If you think that getting rid of NIPS in Hanson is going to remove the litter, you're kidding yourself. It ain't. It's not, come on, get real. Get real. Getting rid of NIPS in Hanson is not going to do any good for anybody, they're going to go somewhere else and get it. And people that buy NIPS in Hanson, that live in Hanson, do you think they're throwing them away in Hanson? No, this is coming from out of town. Hundred percent.
One speaker at a time, please, Mr. George.
That, I, that's all I really got to say, I think it's, I thi, I think it's actually a joke that you guys want to get rid of the NIP.
One moment, this gentleman was at the microphone first. Yes, sir.
Steve Low Franklin. Um, it's a, it's a litter problem, and that's all it is. There's litter all over this town. Go to the train station, I'm over there every single day walking my dogs. I'll find two NIPS, but like the gentleman said earlier, but you'll find about three Dunkin', Dunksa cups, you'll find a bunch of Kid wrappers and everything else that aren't recyclable either, but no one says anything about that. And the wind blows those right away and they go all over the place. So it's a litter problem, so everybody needs to call people out when they see someone just throwing or leaving something around, call these people out. It's a litter problem. It's not any problem, and I don't want the government in my face about what I can and cannot do. That's it.
Yes, sir.
So, just responding to two things that were said.
Yes, sir.
First things first, to the gentleman owns Luke's Liquors comments regarding that it's being used for moderating how much they use and that it's being used at parties. First off, I've never seen a nip at a party, that's, I don't know where that's coming from. But second off, in regards to using it for moderation, for disclosure, my mother and my best friend were both alcoholics, and they used NIPS, my mother used NIPS for about five years in order to hide her drinking from my dad. She used them right up until the day she died. My best friend of 30 years was also a hardened alcoholic, and he used NIPS, yeah, he used them to moderate so that he could keep track so he didn't kill himself by drinking too much, because he usually was drinking, he moved into NIPS as he became a more hardened alcoholic. That is just simply not true, NIPS are being used by alcoholics not to moderate. And then in regards to, uh, what was supposed, said by the Select Board, I'm sorry, but that's just not true, it's not coming in from other towns. We find the highest proximity of NIPS are found right outside of, within one-eighth to one-quarter of a mile of our liquor stores here in town. They're buying them at the liquor stores in town and then throwing them on the ground on the way home. Over in Halifax, a more in-depth study of that was done, 19,000 bottles were picked up, and the vast majority of them, over 75% of them, were found within one-eighth of a mile of a liquor store in that town. They're being bought and drank immediately and then thrown out of the window of a car. We don't have sidewalks, there's not pedestrians throwing them out, there are people driving throwing them out. That's all I wanted to say to those two points.
Thank you. Mr. Santa Lucia.
Hi, I'm Pepper Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street, uh, stepping down from the stage to speak as a resident. People talk about this freedom of choice. Alcohol is one of the most heavily regulated products in our society, and it's for a reason. We recognize that alcohol can be enjoyed responsibly, and it can also be abused. We limit advertising of alcohol to minors. We regulate tobacco products, we don't allow candy-flavored tobacco products to be marketed to children. We make choices all the time about how products should be structured and whom they should be offered to and who's allowed to buy them. We have a pro, I, I'm a proud, uh, customer of 1458 Liquor and the other liquor stores in town, but I'm sorry, this is a product that's designed to be abused. We don't have to have these alcohols sold in these packages in these quantities. We know based on what everyone's saying and from what I see in my front yard every week that people who use this particular product and others don't throw them away properly. And we know, maybe there are people using them responsibly, but there are all, they are, they lend themselves to being abused while people are driving. So some people are using responsibly, a lot of people from all the evidence that I've seen are not using them responsibly. We can make an informed choice about whether we want the status quo to continue, and I think we should, I would love to see this ban at the state level, I'd love to see it at the national level, but we had, it's not happening at those levels, we need to start here. So I urge people to maintain the nip ban.
Yes, sir.
How you doing? Bill Clements, 501 High Street in Hanson. I live in the literal halfway point between this liquor store and the one on Main Street. I've been here 25 years. I've literally picked up thousands of nips in my front yard, where I've cut the bushes back, the trees back, and other trash. My question is not just the nip trash problem, but the regular trash problem. So what is the fine for throwing trash out the window in Massachusetts? All right, so, and not to inundate the Hanson police. I own one of the largest surveillance companies in Massachusetts. So if I start providing, I have hundreds of hours of license plates, the person tossing it out the window. I could read his watch. So do I start sending this all to the Hanson police to pull plates and find these people? Because I could do it. I can send you hours and hours and hours of trash. And then the people are throwing the vape cartridges out the window, the nip cartridges. I don't disagree. It's not just nips, but it's gotten old. And I'm that house on the corner. Like, I keep it clean and pretty, and I'm out there constantly cleaning it up. But it is a problem. The trash is a problem. The nips are a problem. They serve one purpose. Don't fool yourself. I mean, if you're drinking it, you're tossing it out the window. But I've literally picked up thousands and thousands of nips. So is that a thing now? Can I start sending all the license plates? Let me know.
I will allow you to speak to the police chief at your leisure.
I have AI.
I don't think it's.
But no, I'm not going to waste their time.
It's not within the purview of the town meeting tonight.
It's ridiculous. We have a trash problem in Hanson, absolutely. I've seen it. Dunkin' Donuts. The other thing is the dump. People's trash fly out of it. It happens on our street a lot. People fly to the dump, and the cover comes off. There's trash from that. But the nips are everywhere. It's silly. It's in every town. What do we do? So can we stop fining people? That's my question. If I start, could we have a hotline, a nip hotline now?
And again, not before the town meeting right now. Now, this has been a terrific debate. We'll go to this gentleman right here, but we just want to make sure that something new is being brought to the table. Otherwise, we can move to a vote.
My name is Tom Russo. I live at 60 Helen Drive, which is off of State Street. I've been picking up nips for about eight years on State Street. I walk it every day, mostly every day, as Ann Rain can attest to, with my 30-gallon trash bag. And yeah, there's a few coffee cups. But for every coffee cup I've picked up, I've picked up 10 or 15 nips, especially on the south end of State Street, towards Brook Street. It is just loaded. I go there every day, and if I don't pick up for a week or two, there's 100, 200 nips there. This town voted to get to ban nips. That was by total vote, right? We should adhere to that. Shouldn't let a few shop owners, and I feel bad for them, but we shouldn't allow them to get this overturned.
Do we have anything, do you have anything new to add? Or can we move to a vote? I think everybody's made up their mind as far as how to vote. Mr. Patel, I'll give you the last word.
Just wanted to update the previous speaker. First thing is the vote. The nips haven't been banned yet. They mentioned that they've been already picking up less. Nip ban is going in effect January 1st. Second thing, I know the gentleman kept referring to studies. We've been working at Village Mini-Mart, my family's owning, since 16 years. I've been working since the morning, even when I was a pharmacist. So one little drop in revenue, we could feel it. We are not waiting for studies. You come to the store, you'll see us working all the time. It's not about a little bit of revenue. Last thing, people who are tossing this, we have our own parking lots, cigarette boxes, lottery tickets. We are consistently cleaning up. It's just common sense not to throw any kind of trash out there. And we can't just change human behavior by banning nips.
Thank you. And with that, we'll bring things to a conclusion with the debate. I have a feeling that we may be going to the cards anyways, but let's try it this way. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I promised, I promised to restate the article. So let me reread it. Article 22, "To see if the town will vote to repeal the adopted ban on the sale of miniature, single-use containers for alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw that was approved at the annual town meeting on May 6, 2024, under Article 29." So with that, pardon me?
A yes vote would repeal.
A yes vote would repeal the actions of May 6. So all those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
I guessed it. All right. All those in favor, please raise your blue card at this time and keep it up until the tellers have had a chance to count you.
Thank you.
They have their blue cards.
They're in the visitor section.
If you could count them, please.
Okay.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Twenty-one, two-one.
Twenty-one.
Thirty-two, three-two.
Thirty-two. All those opposed to Article 22, please signify by holding up your blue card now. Yes, sir.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Twenty-three, two-three.
Twenty-three.
Forty-eight, four-eight.
Forty-eight. By a vote of 97 to 109, Article 22 is not adopted. Article 23. We have a citizen's petition proposed by Frank Malisi and 107 others. Mr. Malisi.
I don't know why I walked back up the stairs there. I'll make this short because it's a long night. Article 23 is to move, to see if the town will vote to have the select board write and sign a formal letter to State Rep. David Decost.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Malisi. Before you do the explanation, you have to make the formal motion.
That was the motion. That is the motion there.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to say, "I move." That's what threw me off. So say, "I move" to see.
I move to see if the town will vote to have the select board write and sign a formal letter to State Rep. David F. Decost, Senator, State Senator Michael D. Brady, Governor Marah Healy, and Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, demanding the immediate repeal in its entirety of H.4885 by stating the court text below that includes the signatures of the select board.
Second, Mr. Malisi, would you like to give an explanation?
H.4885 is one of the most sweeping gun repeal laws that has been passed in the United States of America. They pass it in the middle of the night, under the ban of it being a ghost gun ban, that criminals can't manufacture their own guns in their house. That's not what it does. It bans essentially every semi-automatic weapon that's not on the roster. By the way, the roster does not exist, as of right now, and the law is already in effect since the governor did an emergency preamble on it on Wednesday. It restricts the use of me taking my son to a range to show him proper gun safety. It also restricts the use of me taking my son out to hunt with my muzzleloader or my shotgun. At the age of 13, he can do that legally. It goes off and punishes law-abiding citizens. Most of what are in this room might have a license to carry their firearm by banning most of the guns that we have in our house. Yeah, some of them are including AR-15s and so on like that. But most of every semi-automatic weapon right now in the state of Massachusetts is not legally able to be owned if it's not on that roster, which does not exist. This letter would simply require the select board to send it over to the legislator, the lieutenant governor, the governor, asking for its immediate repeal, stating this town meeting vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns on Article 23? Mr. Santa Lucia, if we could just pass him the.
I just have a question about, you know, if the select board, if this were to pass and someone on the select board, as a vote of conscience, doesn't agree with the sentiments of the letter, I'm not saying I'm opposed or in favor, but is this normal to pass a citizen petition to compel the select board to sign a letter that they may not agree to?
Ms. Kimmel.
Yeah, so we've discussed this briefly, and I even have spoken on a number of occasions to Mr. Malisi. Obviously, if town meeting votes to say that the town is opposed to this particular bill, we'll strike a letter that says that. We're not going to use the exact verbiage in this. And we, and town meeting can't make the select board write a letter. But we certainly, in the spirit of whatever town meeting votes, if they vote that they're against this, we'll certainly strike a letter that says that. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Santa Lucia.
And just to note, there's been.
Mr. Malisi.
There's been multiple occasions where a town meeting petition has come up that the select board has written a letter. The ones that I know about was the amendment for the MBTA Communities Grant. The other one was for the flag. Those were two letters that were written by the select board in support of those particular state legislators. And I just want to let you, everybody know, you might not be a gun person. You might not have guns in your house. But the Second Amendment is in our Constitution, just like the First Amendment is, right? It's our rights today, but it might be your rights tomorrow. And it's not something that we should let the government, or specifically the state government and anything, tell us what we can and cannot do with our constitutional rights that are given to us from the United States.
Yep, and just to be clear.
Ms. Kimmel.
Yes, Mr. Killy. I absolutely, I was not suggesting that we have not had other articles that have been similar. And we've approached them in the same way that I've described that we'll approach this.
Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Lauinger, 225 Pleasant Street. I, this is my first town meeting. This is fascinating.
You said it.
Fascinating. Just so you know, one, I'm completely in favor of House Bill 4885. However, it's a House bill. We knew it was happening. I saw the signs. I commute through Hanson. I live in Hanson. I saw it. There was a waiting period. We knew this was happening. So it wasn't a surprise. It didn't happen in the middle of the night. I saw the news. I saw y'all's posts on Facebook. Trust me, it wasn't a surprise. So we saw what was happening. You still have your Second Amendment rights. It's just slightly different now. You had a chance to contact your representative. Hell, not I'm talking here.
I was just about to say the same thing. Please, no outbursts.
I know my rights just as much as you all claim to know yours. You had a chance to contact your representatives, and you still do. So before it got to this, so why would we ask the town council to do something when you could have worked to prevent this, and you still can? This is not for the town council. This is for you to contact everyone and to tell your friends to. Don't beg these people to do something that is literally your responsibility.
I'm going to take this gentleman right.
I would like a chance to respond there, Mr. Moderator.
Well, in a moment, you can.
Dan McDonough, Carriage Road. Just one rebuttal to that is we don't have a state representative.
Not until Ken Sweets gets elected.
No, we don't need, we don't need electioneering on the floor of the town.
I'll take that back, Mr. Moderator.
And I did call every representative and governor and the representative who put this forward. Anyone who's lived through COVID has noticed that we're not getting more rights. The Second Amendment is very important. The Bill of Rights is very important. And when I was a kid, they really drummed in, I'm sure with all of you who were growing up too, the Constitution, the founding fathers. I'm not seeing the same thing in our school system. I test my children all the time. Hey, what's the Second Amendment? What's the Third Amendment? What's the Fourth Amendment? Everyone was paved in blood. There's a very good reason for that. I'm seeing a lot of censorship on the First. I won't get into it, but anyway, I commend Frank for putting this forward. And I appreciate the collective unity in contacting our reps that were standing up for the Bill of Rights. And I believe it was John Marshall and the First Supreme Law Act that said that any law that goes against the Constitution is null and void. I know that they've fought that over the years, and there's been back and forth, but that was the first Supreme Court ruling. So Bill of Rights is top. So thanks again, Frank.
Ms. Rain.
I just want to do a little correction, Frank. The Constitution doesn't grant us the rights. It guarantees our inalienable rights. And we have an inalienable right to free speech and to defend ourselves. And this is what we're up against right now. And I, for one, have contacted everybody I'm supposed to contact. Everybody here, if you are passionate about it, needs to contact it. I have no problem doing this, but it's more important that each individual voice be heard, not a board. That's just the way I see it.
Mr. Malisi.
So just for the lady that was here before, so she knows how much work I put into this. Not only did I get 107 signatures with some help, my son was also in the hospital those three weeks when I was getting those signatures with pneumonia. I contacted our state rep. I don't have a state rep in precinct one and two, but I contacted Decost. I contacted Cutler when I was going through the house. I made a point to call the governor's office and the lieutenant governor's office. I made a point to talk to some of the members on the select board about this. I went through and spent probably 30 or 40 hours in times when I could have done be doing something different and better, to make it a point to bring this to the select board. Because, well, I'm under no illusions that this letter will do anything for the communist regime that we have up there in the State House. It's one of those things that I can at least, I can at least say that I tried my best on top of that and also with this letter.
Mr. Malisi, let's avoid characterizing anybody as one.
Oh, but she's not here, Mr. Moderator. It's okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're. I'm being asked to move the vote. Does anybody have anything new to add?
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Daniel W. Straubman, 510 Mon Ponce Street. The fact that someone would stand before us today and insist that we still have our Second Amendment rights after this unconstitutional bill was passed demonstrates that they have absolutely no idea what the intention of the Second Amendment was. That is, the defense against all enemies, foreign and domestic. How will you defend yourself against all enemies, foreign and domestic, with a black powder rifle, with a close-range shotgun, with a revolver? You don't understand. This is the Constitution. The Second Amendment is every bit as important as the First, and it defends all of the others. Our rights are under assault, and this is one way, although it probably won't amount to much, to at least convey that we are against this unconstitutional, far-left extremist attack on our rights.
And again, we don't need, you know, I'm going to go to this gentleman.
Yeah, Richard Hess, Hudson Street. Outlaw guns, and only outliers will have guns.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Hamilton, Katy Did Lane, 45 years in town. I've been schooled, worked in high school for 45 years. So I've seen the, you know, I've been there for lockdowns. I've been there for active shooters in the school. Call-ins where we think there's a shooter in the school. Been locked down with 12 students, thought we're under attack. The Second Amendment isn't under attack. I think our students are under attack, but we have to do these drills all the time where our students are afraid for their lives at times. This is real. Read the news. We have more shootings than we have days in the year. I'm not a gun owner, so maybe I'm not sure what the profound impact this law does. I'll have to do some more research on that, apparently. So, but from what I just read recently, the executive director of Mass Police supports this law. So there must be something to that. So we're in favor of keeping our children safe, right? So I'm not sure, as a hunter, why you need assault rifles. Maybe I don't know the reasons behind that. So maybe I'm confused. But I'm the one that's doing these lockdown drills, and I've been doing it for many years. I've seen pet suicides by gun. I've had students killed by gun over the 45 years that I've worked in schools. So the gun can be an issue, for sure. Just reading this letter, it says, "Citizen, the board, and the citizens of Hanson, it's your belief that the Bill of Rights and the Civil Liberties must not be infringed upon." So it says the citizens of Hanson would be on this letter. How many citizens of Hanson? Is it just a vote this night, the 100 people or so? That's going to be the citizens of Hanson representing in that letter? I think there's more than 100 people in town. So before you put my name as a citizen of Hanson on that letter, I would assume we get more input on that. Just my take on that. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything new to be said?
I just want to make one point.
Okay, because people are demanding to go home, and I don't blame.
Yeah, I know. I just, I only wanted to make one point, though, about the statement that had been made. Oh, Steve Smith, Foreman Row Street. I wanted to just make one point about that it wasn't slipped in overnight. The bill passed a while ago, and there was supposed to be a 90-day waiting period, as there is with any bill that's passed before it goes into effect. That is to allow for a citizen's petition referendum to be put on, which was suspended and put it onto the ballot to vote, rather than letting the State House do it. When that started happening, Gun Owners Action League started that process. And when the State House became aware of that, Marah Healy used an executive order to force the law directly in immediately in order to block the citizen's petition from being able to do the normal course of actions. I'm sorry, but that's not what was intended by the Mass Constitution. If the citizens want a petition to do that, it's silence in the voice of the people. That's my main point there. And whether you like the bill or not, that particular action is pretty shifty.
Mr. Malisi.
Last thing, Mr. Moderator. I have three kids. They all practice gun safety. I'm concerned with my kids' safety, just like I am every kid's safety. Responsible gun owners aren't the problem here. It's the people who don't have their weapons locked in safes. There's people who don't show their kids the proper way to handle these weapons. And don't get me wrong, there's a lot of kids that get, you know, car accidents every year. I would go ahead and probably say it's one-to-one to gun violence. Maybe probably even more than that. We're not banning, we're not banning driving. Anyway, Mr. Moderator, move the vote, please.
Thank you. Thank you. So all those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The chair believes Article 23 has passed. Would anybody like to challenge that?
No.
Seeing none, Article 23 is adopted. Thank you very much. I now adjourn the special town.
Mr. Moderator, please, before you adjourn, if you wouldn't mind giving me a moment as the chair of the planning board for good of the order?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Joe Campbell from the planning board and the chair of the planning board. Since last town meeting, all the way into tonight's town meeting, your planning board has been unbelievably receptive to the language of that very four-letter acronym MBTA zoning. Just to update this body here, and please pass it on. A few months back, your planning board listened to everything that the town had said, and we did not place anything with MBTA on the floor. It did, it was supposed to come back to the planning board. It definitely did. There was no action in regards to that. Town in Hanson is still in compliance until December. It remains to be seen the effect of that until after December. Please, our meetings are Monday nights, second and fourth week of the month, as well as our zoning board of appeals. There was a speaker tonight that spoke very highly of 40B developments and land use. Come to our meetings so you can educate yourselves exactly what's going on. And I just want everybody to know how conservative your planning board is. And I thank you for your time.
I now adjourn this town meeting. Send down.